It looks like the attendee windows stalled at about five, so we'll we'll get this meeting started. So good evening and welcome to the Montmorency Area School District School Board work session on this Tuesday, February 23rd, 2021 at 7:07 PM. And at this time, I would like to ask our secretary to take a roll.
Certainly, Mr. President, Mr. Albert.
Mr. Albert here.
Dr. Berry.
Dr. Berry here.
Mr. Conkle is absent this evening. Mrs. Matt or Mrs. Marriott.
Mrs. Marriott here.
Dr. Mathers.
Dr. Mathers here.
Mr. Ruffing.
Bill Ruffing here.
Mr. Schimmel.
Dr. Schimmel here.
Mr. Snell.
Mr. Snell here.
And Mr. Omar.
Mr. Omar present.
And before we then go further in the agenda, which next will be a budget presentation by Brandy Smith. Just a couple of notes, the revised, I guess, more complete agenda was posted today. So if anybody had downloaded the previous agenda, it wouldn't have been as complete. There are a few more items on the agenda. So if you haven't seen that, you could go to the website now. During the budget presentation and look at that. So it's one page. It's pretty, pretty slim agenda item tonight. So there will be, before we go to public comment after the business manager's meeting, there's a couple of other items of discussion that I'll I'll note then if the public wishes to comment on those items that the board will discuss, we'll prize you of those items in a little bit. So with that, Brandy, go ahead and give us your budget presentation now.
Don't forget to announce our special session.
Thank you. Thank you, Ron. Yes, prior to this, we had, the board had two sessions, a session regarding a student hearing and then an executive session for legal counsel.
Sorry, I'm trying to get my screen to. Put a slideshow here. All right. Can y'all see my screen?
Yep.
Yes, we can, Brandy.
Okay, so this evening, we're going to be looking at the revenue projections for the 2122 school year. And we'll start there for this evening. And we'll start with local revenues. The local revenues are monies generated, generally produced and generated or collected within the boundaries of our district. So these are revenues that are coming from the people around us, the people in our community. And here you'll see, sorry, I'm trying to move something here. Okay, now I can see. Okay, so here you can see where we are for the 1920 actual. I left that in here because I thought that would be a good piece of information to have. So you can see where these numbers have grown and changed over the last couple of years. On where our budget is for 2021 and what I'm estimating to be what we receive in 2021 currently as of today. And where I'm estimating the budget to be for 2122. And then the last column is going to be the increase or decrease over the 2021 budget, not the projections that we're going to close at, but the original budget we created for the year. Um, so starting there, current real estate taxes, you'll see I'm budgeting them to come in a little lower because they've pretty much closed out already. And I know that's where they're going to come in at. But for next year, this projection here is showing a zero tax increase with revenue. And I'll show you what each couple of different tax increases would produce later on in the presentation. But to show apples to apples, I wanted you to see what it is looking like if we just do almost everything exactly the same as last year. Um, interim taxes, we have the estimate for this year to drop a little bit. We have only collected under $2 to this point. We just didn't have the interim bills this year. And we just recently set out some interim bills, but they didn't total a whole lot. Every once in a while, we'll get a large interim bill. But as you can see, in 1920, we didn't have a lot of intrums either. I will say I am very hopeful for 2122 that we'll see more intrums. If you are looking around, you know, the district, there are new homes being built. So I think we will see a little bit on increase in our interim tax bills in the 2122 school year. So I'd like to leave that at 20,000. The public utility realty taxes, you can see what we received in 1920. We can, you can see what we are expected to receive in 2021. And I've pretty much leveled that at the 45,000 for the 2122. Third income taxes, you can see here where we came in for 1920. That was the start of the pandemic and we were very concerned about that moving into the budget for 2021. So we did cut that back to 3.5 million. I'm currently estimating that to come in at 3.6 million. And I'm also projecting for 2122, 3.6 million, which is $100,000 increase over our 2021 budget. Real estate tax transfer, you can see where we came in in 1920. And our budget was 200,000, a current estimate of 220,000 to be based on what we have to date. And an estimate for 2122 would be 220,000, which is an increase of 20,000 for the 2122 budget. And that's just based on, you know, the real estate transfers that we're seeing going on within the district. Delinquent taxes. You see here where we came in in 1920. 1920 numbers, I'm not really covering too much because we covered those in the last work session, but I did leave them up there for reference for everyone. Where we budgeted for the 2021 was at 500. I'm currently estimating will be in about 500. We don't typically see that revenue start coming in until March, April, May. So right now, we do not have a lot of revenue to base that off of. But based on prior history, I think leaving at 500 is a good option at this point. And for 2122, also another good option. Earnings on investment, wow, 1920, we were having a great year. If we wouldn't have had COVID, that number would have been even larger. 2021. We budgeted 20,000 because we knew it was going to be bad for our interest revenue. My current estimate for this year is about 10,000. Our revenue, we just don't have it for our earnings right now. So I'm budgeting at about 10,000. But for 2122, I'm going to put it back up to 20,000 for right now because I'm hopeful we'll see some, a little bit of increase in that interest rate and we'll be able to get it back up to at least 20,000. So before I move on to the other half of the local revenues, do I have any questions on this half of the local revenues? Now I can come back if you have more after I do it, but I just wanted to check to see. Okay, hearing silence, so. Moving on to the other half of the local revenues. Um. So athletic event admission, this is one that's kind of tricky here because 1920, we did just over 60,000. We had budgeted 51,000 for 2021, not knowing what was going to happen with COVID. Um, we have not received any athletic admission this year because we're not charging. We're very limited on the number of people that we're allowing into our buildings. Um, so we're hopeful that in 2122, we'll be able to get back to having people here. And so I've put that back into the budget. They didn't take it up to where we were originally budgeting it because now that we have the technology to have streaming live events, is that going to cut back on the number of people that are coming? So the next year is kind of going to be, um, this year to see who comes back live and who stays home on their couch and watches our events going on. So I did decrease that by $6,800. Activity participation fee was just over $10,000 in 1920. We budgeted 9,000. I'm currently estimating 8,500 and bringing it back up to 9,000 for the 2122 school year. Something new that we added this year because of COVID, we had to get Chromebooks and we offered device insurance to families to protect them from accidental damage. And that wasn't something that was in our budget for revenues. It's offsetting a lot of our costs, but our costs will be in our budget. So it's important that we show these revenues also. Currently, to date, our revenue for device insurance is $19,232. I'm unsure of how many people will find that of value and select it again next year. Um, so we budgeted for 2122 at $18,000, which is an increase in our revenues overall of $18,000 because it wasn't budgeted in 2021. IDA funding, you'll see here where it was in 1920, where it's budgeted in 2021. And the reason is we always budget off the prior year. So I'm going to estimate this year, we're going to be at 325,722. So my budget for next year would be at that same amount and which is a $4,832 increase. Facility rentals, as you can see where we came in in 1920, where we budgeted for 2021, being hopeful. I am probably, we're probably not going to have any facility rentals for the 2021 school year. But also in being hopeful that we'll move forward, we have budgeted that $3,000 in revenues for the facility rentals in 2122. Tuition payments, this is one that varies every year just depending on how many kids we have coming in from other districts and how many kids are taking summer classes or driver's ed. So this varies every year significantly. 1920, 124,000, we budgeted 78,000. I'm currently still at that because we don't have a lot of information at this point because we haven't, we don't do the billings until the end of the year. And summer school is something that we haven't started receiving payments for yet. So I've left that estimate where it is as the budget. And for 2122, I've just increased it just slightly to the 80,000 because it seems like we're always at least hitting 80,000 annually now in a five-year average. So that's a good place for that to be. Miscellaneous revenue, 1920, you see, we had a large one and that goes back to several different things, including grants that teachers write and things like that. We always budget right around 20,000 because we don't know what we're going to get. Um, current estimate of 20,960 dollars and an estimate for the following year of 20,000 just because that's where we like to get it because we typically get that amount. I did pull something out of here and I'll show that later on in a slide. I did pull things that were CARES related out of these revenues because I wanted you to see apples to apples. CARES money needs to be used on one-time expenditures. They cannot be, it cannot be used on items that are going to be part of your budget annually or else you'll find yourself in a very difficult position when those CARES funds and SIR funds are gone. So I purposely did this so we can compare each year as almost like we don't have those revenues in it, but I will show it later on. So overall, you're seeing our local revenue increase 137,782 dollars over last year's budget. Questions here?
Yeah, Brandy, I have a question on the device insurance. Are we the insurer or will that 18,000 be an expense to an insurance company for that device insurance?
Depends on the device. So some of, some of the devices we did purchase additional insurance on and some of them we do not have additional insurance on. So it just depends on the device.
So this 18,000, some of it.
Set by other expenditures. So there's a revenue, but there's also an expenditure for it later on.
Right. I just want to, the reason why I asked, I wanted to know if we were the insurer or if we have an outside insurance firm that we pay for that.
Some of the devices we purchased the insurance on, not knowing what we were doing, you know, not when we went into this, when we purchased a bunch of them in March, when this happened, some of those we had purchased the insurance on. So some of them do have outside insurance on them and some do not. We treat them all as the same.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Moving on. To state revenues, state monies originated from the Commonwealth of PA appropriations and directly distributed to the district. So here are our state revenues. I do know the governor came out with his budget. We have been advised by our professional organization to level fund our subsidies because they do not, they're not confident that that is what school districts will be receiving at this point. So as in preparing their budget, they said to start with level funding and as things become more solid, we can make adjustments in the future. So that was the advice and that's what we typically do here until it gets closer. We level fund until we have a better understanding because usually the first couple sets of numbers that they put out there are usually a lot different than what we end up with. So that being said, you can see what we received in 1920. We budgeted 2021 off of what we thought we were going to get in 1920. And then we budgeted, we were estimating this year to get what we received in 1920. And then we're also carrying that forward into the 2122 budget. So currently that looks like a $27 difference. Special education, you see where it came in at in 1920. And it's just in 2021, we budgeted just a little bit more than, or a little bit less than that, about 20,000 less than that. And where we're estimating it this year is 1,319,628. So that's where we're going to budget it at for 2122 right now, which is about 20,722 more. Transportation subsidy, it came in at 478,248 in 1920. Where we budgeted it in 2021 was based off of what we were estimating for 1920. Our current estimate for this year, we just received our projections for this year is 480,113 dollars. So we'll use that number for this year, but this was our first set of projections for this year. We usually get a couple of revised sets before they do the final payout in August for this year. So currently that's an increase of $7,563. Our rental and sinking payments, as you can see where it came in last year, where it is for the 2021 budget, we budgeted at 517,360. I'm estimating it right now to come in around 520,000. We're just working out some of those early payments that we made. And so I, that's a good estimate there of the 520,000. So I left it that way for 2122. I'm just waiting to get another plan con K back and then I'll have a better estimate for that one. But that is a 2,0640 dollar increase. The medical and dental services came in at 33,670 dollars in 1920. We're budgeted at 35 for 2021. We're estimating at 34 for this year and we're going to leave that at 34 for 19, or for 2122, which is a decrease of about $1,000. Estate property tax reduction stays basically flat every year. It's just changes a little bit due to some of the tax that we can get credit for if we have a Philadelphia resident. So that basically remains the same annually. So there's really no change overall. The PA block grant, as you can see, 1920, and I spoke to this last time, it has a has the, what was the grant? It has another grant included in it for 1920. It was, I can't remember which one it was. It was, I think it was the PA smart grant in there. That was $35,000. So you see that increase there, but the PA block grant, unless we get a smart grant, is going to remain the same annually. So we budgeted that at the same amount. And other income from the state. This is your PISers and social security reimbursement. And as you know, as your wages go up, this number goes up. So that's what it's reflecting here right now. The budget for 2122, a good estimate currently with what I'm projecting is 2,000,750,000, which is an increase of 198,200. But as we work out contracts and get retirements in place and everything, that number will change a little bit. So just know that that number will fluctuate. So currently our state revenue has an increase over the 2021 budget in the amount of 228,098 dollars. But the majority of that is the other income from state, which is your reimbursement. Any questions here? Federal revenues, these are monies orientating from federal sources and made available to school districts through direct grants, state channels or other agencies conducting programs through the school district. Here, I just left this as we normally do, titles and the PA medical assistance funding. On here, you see no changes because we budget off of prior years. And we just keep moving forward until we have better estimates closer to the time. I usually get those, I believe sometime in March or April, we'll have better numbers on that for next year's or for this year's that will project next year. So we'll update that then. So here you're really seeing no changes over the 2021 budget until we get a little bit closer. So that is our federal revenues. And again, I don't have anything that was because of COVID in this budget right here. I'll go to that piece next. So any questions on federal revenues? Okay. So I made this slide for one-time revenues for COVID. The 6999 miscellaneous revenues I stole from local. I took out the piece of 386,600 dollars. This was a grant that we received at the local level due to COVID. It should only be used on one-time funds. The other revenue I took out of here is the 8690, other restricted federal grants due to COVID. And as you could see, we received some of these funds in 1920 where we had budgeted some of these in our 2021 budget. And we will also budget some of these in our 2122 budget. But I think it's good to show them separately so you can all understand where the money is being spent and understand that it's not money we're going to have moving forward. So it's important to keep it separate. So we don't think we have more money than what we do available to us moving in the future. So you can see here, we don't know what we'll receive in 2122. And what I have put in for the current estimate of the federal grants, that can be spent over a three-year period, over three budgets. This year, the 2021, next year, 2122. And part of it can also be spent in 2223. So if we determine that all of it doesn't need to be spent in 2021 or in 2021 or 2021, I'm sorry, 202122, we can move it forward, move so as, as we need and see fit for the one-time revenues. And these are restricted to items that we can spend on. They have to be spent on items that we relate directly to what we need for COVID. So that's why I've left them separate here. Does anyone have any questions on this slide?
Brandy, I had asked before in one of the other meetings we had to get a list on what COVID-related items we could use this money for. And I haven't got a list yet.
Oh, I thought Mrs. Basin sent out a board update. I'm sorry, on some of the stuff we were using it for.
Ron, there is one, yeah, I can point you to a website that has the listings so that you can see it in total. I think there's 12 possibilities of things that you can use it for.
Okay, I appreciate that.
I'll make myself a note here.
Brandy, I just wanted to say. Brandy, I wanted to say thank you for breaking out those COVID-related grants. I think it gives us a much clearer picture of our budget process going, going forward. Thank you.
You're welcome. I thought it would be clearer because then you're looking at things without these extra funny things in it. And I'll try to break some of those out in the expenditures also that they're not getting mixed in with everything else also to give you a clearer picture.
Thank you.
Okay, so total revenues. Again, put big down here. It does not include one-time revenue because we need to look at it as just what we're. It does not include one-time revenue because we need to look at it as just what we're going to have. Um, where we came in in nineteen twenty was thirty million, three hundred forty-four thousand, four hundred and sixty-two dollars. For our twenty twenty one budget, we were being very conservative because we do not know all the effects COVID is having financially. Um, we put in thirty million, one hundred thirty-five thousand, eight hundred and sixty-six dollars. Our estimate for this year right now um as of today, when I reviewed it before I put it together, was thirty million, two hundred twenty-eight thousand, one hundred and twenty-nine dollars. And that will change a little bit as we get closer to those um final numbers as, you know, April and May, and we have better estimates on some other things coming in. Twenty one, twenty two. Um. The estimate is thirty million, five hundred and one dollars or five hundred and one thousand, seven hundred and forty-six dollars. An increase over our twenty twenty one budget of three hundred sixty-five thousand, eight hundred and eighty dollars. Questions, comments?
Brandy, does that, does that contain all of the COVID as well?
It does not include any one-time revenue.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Yep, I'm trying to. In this whole process, I'm going to try to remove that from everything.
Brandy, um could you? And I realize that, that these numbers not, the one-time revenue from the CARES Act and that isn't included. Could you possibly um tell the, the sequence of actions that happened after the federal government um approves um CARES money? Because it doesn't come to our district instantaneously. Could you break down for the people on what it takes for it to get to our district, if any?
It, it goes to the state level first and then this, the state um decides on how it's dispersed. So the federal government doesn't technically decide on how it's dispersed. Um, the state level then puts it out and then um Mrs. Basin goes in and um fills out all kinds of documents um on how we're going to spend it, what it's going to be spent on, how it works for, how it works with COVID, why we need it. Um, and that's after, you know, we meet as an administrative team and discuss where our biggest needs are, where we can see the largest impact. Um, where it's not going to have long-term effects and be something that's going to be a continuous item in the budget. I mean, there's a lot of things that we look into as we're using COVID funds um to make sure that they're used in the best places overall. Um, and then we have to actually spend a lot of the money and then submit the invoices and documents with it before we do get reimbursed. So like, some of the money will be spent in this year, but we may not get reimbursement until August. Because, and that's with even our basic ed subsidies and our transportation subsidies. A lot of times, we don't finish payments until August. That's why the audit is always so far behind because we haven't really ears closed, but there's still a lot of outstanding stuff.
Ron, to, to piggyback on that too, we had to be a part of telephone calls with Betsy DeVos at the federal level. Each state had to go through an application process to receive these grants. Um, the applications had to be approved at the federal level. And they were, Pennsylvania's was approved a little bit later, I think, than some other states. However, then Pennsylvania was determining when they were going to release the funds. And then it turned around and the federal government was short on releasing the funds as well. So there was a whole process for each state to be approved to receive these as grants prior to any of us ever being able to apply for these. Uh, but we did have to attend a phone call with her and then we had to attend other meetings with the state so that we could understand what was going to be coming down the pike when it did get here. Uh, and then there's the series of PDE emails that go back and forth to make sure that they're sharing with us what is happening. Those were things from PDE generally that were saying when the monies were coming and like you asked, what could they be used for? So that was all the precursor to what uh Brandy was just sharing too.
And, and that was a, a, a great uh explanation of it, which will help the public understand it a little bit more. The one thing I might add is um Christina, when you, when you put in paperwork um saying what you want to use money for, that doesn't necessarily mean it's going to be approved. It's the state, the state decides whether the request that you made is a legitimate request. And if you request a hundred thousand dollars for something, we might only get half of that. It all depends what the state approves.
That is correct. It is a grant. We have to put our grant applications in. And we, we've had several different types of, of COVID monies like that where they have all been grants. Um, so we have all, like Brandy explained, we've all been speaking about the long-term visions and the best use of the money. The Senate did send us a letter that we received this week that stated, please be aware, this is just like the era funds in oh nine, ten. Do not be spending them on items that have the expenditure that would roll year to year, only use them for one-time purchases. So we're being very diligent in how we estimate what those expenditure types should be. And then making sure that we have that long-term vision in place to make sure that it fits our academic programming as we move forward.
I just hope that more school districts um take the advice of the Senate this time because the last time they didn't.
Exactly, exactly. And that really put people into a shortfall and we, we never want to do that. That's why I sent the board the update and shared at this point in time, here's what we know, we believe that we can get in this grant. And as we move forward, uh for example, the math programs that we need at the elementary capacities. The teachers are the ones who will drive the decision-making in the programs and we need for them to be able to have time to pilot all of these. They did start this process before COVID and they were, they were doing wonderful things in piloting two programs, I think at this point um with Dr. Breon. So that process was started and we already knew that we needed a program that was better than everyday math, that was more up-to-date and could provide a, a better constructive curriculum for them. So, but this is something that we're really seriously considering because we will know based on Acadian's math, how far we might be behind. If we are behind, what does that look like? What do we need to catch the students up? And then all of those other programs come and fall into line. So there are many things that we are considering, like I shared in that. So my hope is that we do receive approval and um there are some things that we put out there prior and they sent them back and said, you need to modify this. We'll make those modifications so that it fits their prerequisites, I'll say, of those twelve criteria. And then we'll move it forward again.
And that's, and that's why I'm kind of eliminated the one-time revenue. I'm gonna try eliminating the one-time expenditures and moving them into their own section as we go through this budget process because it is very important that we do keep it separate. So you'll see me and hear me keep saying that I'm removing it and moving it over here. Um, and that's why it's to protect us moving in the future, so we don't get confused as to where we really are and where we need to be. Any other questions on these? Hi. Real estate taxes, I told you, I showed this with no tax increase. Um, I just want to show you what it looks like going halfway to index or just a little bit over index because I only usually take it out two decimal points and up to index. Um, if we go halfway to index, it increases our local revenue of two hundred and fifty thousand. If we go all the way to index, it increases our revenue um four hundred and ninety-three thousand. And I shared here what it looks like on an annual and monthly basis for the average property assessment here in the district. Um. I'm showing you these so you have them for reference moving into the expenditures. As we work through the expenditures, we'll be able to determine where we need to be um as the district. But I did want to share, you know, what the property tax increases would look like. Do we have questions here? We did pass the, the um resolution not to exceed index, so obviously we cannot go above index. Okay, I will move forward. Um, I, we always sees, I always get a lot of questions about fund balance. Um, it's not really part of revenues, but it is our savings account. So where we are and we're, if we just take from the twenty twenty one budget and say we're going to use exactly what we had planned, the four hu- or the three hundred and seventy-five thousand, four hundred and thirteen dollars, that leaves an estimated fund balance on June thirtieth of three point six million. And three hundred and fifty-nine thousand, five hundred and fifty-five will still be assigned. Um, that's where, you know, we're leaving it right now. As we get closer, we'll be able to determine how much of, of fund balance we will need to use. A lot of that will come down to um our biggest bill, our cyber charter school costs this year. So it's, I'm kind of holding it right now, but as we get closer and closer, we'll have a better idea of where we're coming in with that. Um, but not much has changed with our enrollment numbers there. So unfortunately, it's going to probably look like that three hundred and seventy-five thousand, if not a little bit more. So we'll give you a better projection as we get closer. Any questions on fund balance? Okay, timeline, same as last time I presented last month. Tonight, we're doing revenues, next month, exactly a month from today, we're going to do expenditures. We'll do a full budget review in April. Beginning of May, we'll look at adopting a proposed final budget. End of May, we'll review the changes. In June, we're going to adopt a final budget. Any questions on the timeline? Okay, I want to remind everyone uh as we're working through this, that this is a work in progress. There is going to be changes. Um, and this is just the beginning process with the group. So I'll open it up if there's any other discussion at this point with the revenues. Um.
Brandy, I, I do want to just take a moment and reflect on what you have just shared because it is significantly different than what we believed was going to happen with COVID. We believed that the revenues would take a plummet of some kind with the interim, with the earned income tax. Uh, we thought that we would see a higher rate of delinquent taxes being turned in years later. None of those things happened. And when we look at that earned income tax, thanks for pulling that back up, when we look at that item specifically, that is amazing to me because it says, as you and I were talking, you pointed out to me that it's probably looking at our industries rather than looking at those who may have jobs in the restaurants, in the food service industries and in the hotels. We, we obviously do not have as many folks in those types of line of work. We're seeing an increase of one hundred thousand dollars. And remember, this is one percent, right? We're still at the one percent or are we higher?
One point one five.
Okay, one point one five percent of the overall. So that value is one point one five percent of the overall earnings, increase in earnings within our community. So it, it was not what we expected, but it's a very good thing which tells us that either people are getting promoted, people are getting raises, or there's more things moving into our community to help prop up the earned income taxes, which will probably follow along with what Brandy is, is sharing with you with the interims. You know, people potentially being able to make modifications to their homes. They've spent a lot of time in their homes at this point and they may now be willing to make those modifications if they know their jobs are secure. So this was really a surprise and I think that it speaks to our district. I think that it speaks to our community at large. Um, Brandy, can I pick on you about your house hunting just for a minute?
Certainly. Randy, start over here and find me a house.
Sometime, um, looking for a house within the borough and she's been reporting on the things that she's noticing that we don't have a lot of homes for sale in the borough. Uh, I, I think Michelle shared that it took her two years to find a home within the Montouris Valerius School District. I, I would look at our community and I do believe that that is because we're a safe community. I think that we are a community where, and I'm going to use Brandy's word, she really, it, it was the lightbulb moment. If you want to share it, go ahead.
I don't remember what I said now.
What she said was there are many other communities around us. Go ahead.
Okay, but here, um, when I walk down the street, it's not, um, this place that they have in every state, it's not, it's not common places. It's, oh, look at that little shop, it has cute little things in it. Oh, look at that cute little restaurant and you walk down the street, look at the bakery. It's, it's home, it's safe, it's, it's just, it makes you feel warm inside when you walk down the street in Montourisville.
And you can, you can walk down the street in Montourisville and, and many other communities, you can't do that. So I, it really speaks volumes about the types of people that we have within our communities and how much they value uh the other people around them. So I, I think it's phenomenal what we are actually seeing. And I, I'm so proud that this is how it's transpiring and you can actually equate it to a dollar value here if you, if you think about it.
I have, I have a couple of things I want to bring up and one's about the earned income taxes. I think one reason why um, why you're, you're not seeing a decline in that in a COVID situation, I think a lot of that has to do with um CARES money that were given to small businesses to keep their people employed. So to say that, that most of our earned income taxes is coming from big business, I think that's a misrepresentation of, of what it really is because I think we have a lot of, of small businesses in our district that, that contribute. And because of, of federal money, they were allowed to, or, or they were able to continue to contribute um by keeping some of their employees um hired. The other thing I want to bring up is I, I encourage everybody to look up the Williams Sports Sun Gazette article on January twenty eighth of twenty twenty one that's entitled, More Than a Quarter of State's Households Struggled Financially Even Before the Pandemic. And I want to read a couple of statements and sentences that were in that. Uh, one of them is over one point three million Pennsylvania households or twenty-seven percent were already struggling financially when COVID nineteen hit last year, according to Kristen Roth, President of the United Way of Pennsylvania. That's twenty-five percent or twenty-seven percent of our households who are in this working family category where they earn more than the who are in this working family category where they earn more than the federal poverty, poverty level wages, but not enough to afford all their household essentials. Uh, and she, she also stated, that, um, she found that these households had one month or less of savings to be able to cover all of their basic household bills. Um, like I said, I'd encourage everybody to pull that article from the Sun Gazette and read it um, while we're thinking about, um, this, um, budget that we're working on.
Any other questions or comments? All right, I'm hearing nothing unless I'll turn it over to Mr. Schimmel.
Thank you, Brandy. And with that, before we then move to the public comment, uh, section of the agenda, uh, again, to repeat, there's a, a, a refreshed, uh, agenda that was posted earlier today. So if you hadn't had a chance to pull that down, had a few more lines of action items that are relatively mundane, actually. And additionally, we'll be later, if time permits, we'll have a discussion on, uh, board policy zero zero six. We don't anticipate there'll be action, just we need to flesh out some things down the road, how we'll, how we'll modify that policy. So, um, so with that, uh, the public, you know, the public comment, uh, section of the agenda, residents, it's for residents and taxpayers. Uh, they can comment on any matters of concern in the district. Uh, you can comment on official action, past fix official action, or anything that's, uh, been discussed so far. Uh, and then any items of deliberation that you would see in the agenda, um, you can discuss those as well uh, and, and offer your comment on those things. Um, and that's why I mentioned the policy oh six, so that if you, you have some thoughts, uh, comments you'd like to make on that policy, uh, that would be the time. Now, we have consolidated our public comment, uh, agenda item or our public comment section, previously before a policy change, we had had one about this time and then one at the end. We put it all together. It's, it's all at one time. So, so there's just an opportunity to basically the, the, the sort of, I don't say the sky's the limit, but it's pretty open. Anything, all things Montoursville Area School District are, are open for, uh, comments. So, um, when you comment, please provide your name and your address and, uh, commenters will be given, uh, three minutes per person. Uh, three-minute unpause timeframe. So with that, Sebastian, go ahead and open up the, uh, window for the public comment section. Close the window on the public comment section and let's move to our agenda items and then let's, let's, let's get to this discussion on oh six. And Superintendent Basin, if you would walk us through that agenda item, those agenda items.
Absolutely, sure. Under G one, approval of the payment of check number six zero three two five to the borough of Montoursville in the amount of twenty-one thousand, one dollar, sixty cents. May I please have a motion?
Move to approve.
Whoa. I heard, I heard Jen, uh, first, and, uh, Danny, did you give me a second on that?
Second.
Okay, I thought I saw you. All right, uh, discussion or questions on this?
I would just hope in the future, I would just hope in the future that, um, when we do these contracts, we, um, kind of protect the district a little bit better on, on these payments for when the school shut down.
Yeah, we, we definitely should have known that back in March, right, Ron?
No, I'm saying in the future, Danny. Hey, 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 uh, Alice, let's move along here now. Any more comments or, uh, questions on it? Okay, uh, all in favor, say aye.
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 Posed. Aye, seven.
G two, approval to adopt the adjudication in the student discipline matter for student number two, 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 eight, seven, zero. That was determined in a hearing held before the board on February the twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-one.
We have a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Second by Jen. Any comment or questions? All in favor, say aye.
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 Posed. Aye, seven.
Personnel, P one, approval to hire Connor Ritten for the position of technical support specialist at an hourly rate of nineteen dollars and twenty-seven cents for the twenty twenty-one school year and upon successful completion of a probationary period, then as a full-time employee for twenty-one, twenty-two at a salary of thirty-seven thousand dollars.
Move to approve.
Second. Second. Okay, we have a second by Bill Ruffing. Um, any questions or discussion?
Is this a new, is this a new to position?
No, it's a replacement of a position that has been long since evaporated, I'll say. So.
Okay, usually you, you put a comment on their replacement for, that's
Yeah.
Or if it's due.
No, it's, it's been well over a year since, yeah, it's well over a year that we haven't had this position.
So the, the money is already in the budget.
The monies would be in the budget through other circumstances that allowed them to be in this department? Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So, i- in, in other words, how do I go about this? So in other words, um, the money and the money is in the budget, which was being used for, um, that position.
Yes.
Okay.
Any other questions? Are you, if not, all in favor, say aye.
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 Posed. Aye, seven.
P two, approval to hire Sean Walker as the varsity girls' track and field head coach for the twenty twenty-one season at a salary of four thousand, one hundred dollars.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Questions? Comments? All in favor, say aye.
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 Posed. Aye, seven.
P four, approval to accept the resignation of Deanna. I'm sorry, did I start with P three? I did not. I'm so sorry. Let me go back to P three. Approval to accept the resignation of Kama Bennett, food service employee, effective February the twenty-sixth of two thousand and twenty-one.
Motion to approve.
It's who?
I'll second it.
Okay. All right, uh, questions? Discussion?
I apologize. Who, who made the motion?
I did.
Oh, okay. Thank you, Danny.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Posed. Aye, seven.
P four, approval to accept the resignation of Deanna Isley, food service employee, effective January the twenty-first of two thousand and twenty-one.
We have a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Questions? Discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Posed. Aye, seven.
And that concludes her.
Concludes our rather, I guess, sort of a mundane agenda items. Um, with that, um, we're still time-wise in good shape. So we have, uh, the policy oh six discussion. And we, you know, we, we heard, we had our legal counsel, um, explain all the ins and outs of, 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 for one, that, that particular paragraph in oh six, that's, I think we wonder what does that really say? And they, they walked us through that. And we also have the additional idea of, of even public comment, uh, periods tonight and, and how we consolidated and whether we want to continue with a consolidated, uh, agenda for public comment. But let's first, if you have thoughts on that, um, that policy language, and also, um, what type of documents would you like to see actually attached to the pre-board agenda? And what, what do you know we should not do too?
I, I just, you know, when we've been discussing this and I just want the public to know that, you know, the process that we're going through and what we're doing in no way, shape or form is to, uh, seclude anyone from anything. Um, and I, I think that that's important to let the public know is that, you know, we're gonna, we're gonna find bumps along the way that we're, we're not going to be exactly perfect on or, or not be able to, you know, have the policy exactly the way it should be. But at the end of the day, I, I just think it's really important. I think over the last couple of weeks, I've, or the last couple of meetings, I've noticed that the public is starting to get a little standoffish as far as what, you know, we're not allowing the public to do. And in no way, shape or form are we doing anything that we're doing to prevent you from having a voice. Um, and I think that's important to let, let the public know that. As far as the one public comment at the beginning of the meeting, it makes sense to me to have it towards the end as well. Um, you know, and, and I can understand why some people out there might look at it like, you know, here we are. You know, at the end of the meeting, we can't voice our opinions and like, we're suppressing them from doing that. And, and I appreciate and understand that, but that is definitely not the intent of what the board is doing as far as making a one public comment. Um, like you say, Dave keeps talking about emails. Um, you are going to have, you know, the opportunity to speak at the beginning. You can speak about whatever happened previously at the other meetings. Um, so, and then as far as striking out that, that, uh, sentence, it can be striked out. Um, we just have to figure out what we want the public to have, and you have to understand too, that we have to protect ourselves as much as we can and not allow things to get out there that shouldn't be out there. And I think that's a part of the reason why we have it the way, the way it is. So, um, that's, that's all I have.
I, I just want to comment again. You must have the public comment period prior to the vote. The public has the right to share with you what their opinions are about what you're going to vote on. So that's why it is there. I believe the po- I believe the original policy in nine oh three says one public comment period. That's what we stuck with. That's what the policy committee wanted, and that is what we stuck with. It's one public comment period.
And it's, and, and again, we want to be transparent. We are meeting in public so the public can hear what we have to say. We'll work on putting documents up that we, that are not confidential that we can, so you have that before you. And then you can talk to us and give us your opinions at the beginning of the meeting. If we go to our two hours and then we can't have public comment, but it's on the agenda, then people will be angry at us if we say no. But we're always open to emails. If you're listening to something on our meeting and you have a concern after public comment, please email us. We will respond to you. Let's be, be polite, please, as, as we like to be polite with you as well. We're all here to work together, but the board is the ones that you have elected to make the decisions. We do that. We take your input certainly very seriously. But we're here to make those decisions. So you need to just let us do our work and, um, give us your opinions. But I just would like to see a little bit more of community, um, spirit here and less divisiveness.
And if I could add, Dottie, um, the, the, the early comment period in the past was always directed or limited, uh, to comments dealing with the agenda, unless you had submitted a written request to talk about any topic. I liked moving more time at the beginning because then it freed up. People didn't have to limit their comments to just the agenda. Yes, they would only have a three-minute period, but they could talk, they could talk about any topic that they felt was relevant, that they wanted to address with the board. And I, and I do think the, I've been in those meetings where someone was sitting and they sat through the whole board meeting. And then at the very end, they just got up and they only wanted to make a one short positive comment. But yet they had to sit there for two hours before that opportunity came up. So I, I really think that if we can make sure people are aware that this beginning period is where they can address issues outside the agenda, we can hear, um, all, all of the votes comment. And if, uh, like our policy states, if we run into those issues where people can't be accommodated in that, we can continue this discussion at, at the next meeting then and have those people, again, start the meeting off or have time at our work session to that. Because typically a work session is not to be the place where we're addressing a lot of comments from the public. It's the place where the board has the opportunity to basically talk through a lot of items that aren't on the agenda, but prepare ourselves to pass that agenda at the following meeting. Thank you.
I just want to, um, make, first make comments on the, on, um, the public comment period. The first comment period has to be done. We all know that because, um, there needs to be public comment on agenda items before any votes can be taken. So there's no question about that first comment period. But what I'm saying is, when you have a limit on your, on your board meetings and you're not allowing people to speak after hearing the board meeting, um, with questions or concerns or, or comments that they would like to make at the end of the meeting, that's not in the interest of transparency. And if you want to hear from people, you need to let them be able to speak. On the other subject of the, um, policy, which states that, um, the, the ten days, uh, prior to, um, getting, uh, attachments, that they need to, to apply ten days prior to get attachments, which doesn't allow them to get the attachments before the board meeting. I have a problem with that, and, and I think there's other districts in our area that also had a problem with that. After doing research and, and having helped do this research, um, I found, um, for instance, four of them in our, in our general area, Muncie, South Williamsport, Milton and Jersey Shore, that actually do not make their people file right-to-know requests to see attachments. Now, the public understands that they can't see attachments when it has to do with personnel matters or student matters uh, because of privacy issues. But there are attachments that are public record that they are entitled to be able to see, whether it be, um, through a right-to-know request or whether it be a school board that allows them to see that without having to go through the process of a right-to-know. Um, because they are public records, the right-to-know request would not get refused. And it would, it would just cause, um, more paperwork. These, out of these four school districts that I named, there's two of them that even supplies them, um, attachments before the board meeting. They don't supply any attachments that are, are personnel.
Ron, this is, Ron, this is exactly what they've asked us to talk about. You're not, we already want to talk about what attachments we can supply to the public and put in a packet with the agenda.
Yeah, I don't think anybody's against that. I don't think anybody's arguing against that. Well, I will, I, I, Ron, I'll make a clarification. The, 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 uh, the attachments that go with the agenda actually de- don't, don't become a public record until we act on them. But we're, we, we're saying, we're gonna, we're gonna present those beforehand anyway because we want the public to have those, those, those items that are in the agenda that are, that, that they should have. But they truly aren't a public record until we act on it. Now lawyer told us that.
No, no, he said. No, no, he said legally, you don't legally have to.
That's right, because it's a public.
It can be a public record whenever we want to make them a public record.
No, we have to act on it.
Legally.
No, Ron, no. I'm sorry, Ron.
No, 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 Ron, that is incorrect. A public record is defined. A public record is defined. So let's be careful. We're allowing something prior to it being a public record, and that is what you were told. So a public record though has a complete definition under the law. So we're supplying something that has not yet been made a public record. That's what all of you are going to be deciding on.
That's, that's, that's exactly what the lawyer told us. So, look, but, but, but bottom line, it's a technicality, it's a legality, and let's not worry about it. We want to do this. Everybody agrees. So what we're trying to get to is what, what documents shall we? And maybe it's easier to say what documents we will not. We will not. Allowed to. We are, because we're not allowed to. So we, we know, okay, we, we know that there's a, currently there's a, there's a contract discussion going on. We would not present documents related to that in the agenda for the public until after we approve a contract. We know that. Uh, we had a hearing tonight for, for a student. We know that those documents won't ever be seen by the public. They just, it's not legal. So I think we all have a feel for what's not appropriate or legal that's put out there. So what shall we put out there? Let's talk about those things. Now let's, we, we have our packets. I assume our treasurer's reports and all that, we should include that ahead of time, agree? Board, I mean, any reason not to? Um, how about our administrative reports? Any reason not to include those? We have, we also have, uh, how about, um?
How about audits?
Well, sure. Oh, absolutely. Definitely, especially those.
Audits are included as a public record in many places. So I don't know, I don't know about that one. Brandy, what are your thoughts on that one?
Well, if it's approved.
Because.
Have to be approved.
Yeah.
Right. They have to be approved first because then they go to the courthouse. They go to, um, a, a variety of places where people would invest their funds and they have to be seen there. So they have to be approved by the board to be accepted.
Right.
And really, audit is not gonna have a lot of, the audit's not gonna have a lot of public comment on it for us to vote or not. We just vote to accept the audit as it comes in and we're taught, you explain it to us. So that really doesn't make a difference if the public sees it before the meeting or after the meeting. They have, they can see it and it can be posted after we vote on it, correct? So there's no reason to argue about it not going on.
It can be posted before we vote on it. Here's the thing.
Brandy was just saying not.
When, when does it become a legally, a legal document, I guess?
We're go, we're going to have to look at that one because I, I don't post it anywhere until after the board has approved it. And that was the process I was taught. So I would want to get clarification before I tell you what I would recommend.
Yeah, that, so we'll get a clarification on that. So there, there's an item for clarification. How about other documents?
Can I speak to one that should not be on?
Sure.
And, and I would believe that we just hired someone this evening. I do not believe that that needs to be a public document until the person is actually approved because they may or may not have shared that with their employer. There may be ramifications that we don't even know about. So my recommendation would be that we do not do that to other individuals.
I concur.
Personnel. That's personnel. That's, that's common sense.
But it's not personnel, Ron, because one of your sources does it.
One of my sources does what?
Includes them. So I'm making it very clear that I would wish to be different than your sources in that one manner.
One of those school districts.
Yes.
Well.
So we have financials. Correct? We have the admin reports. What other things would you like on a normal basis? What other things would you like to be included?
Con, contracts with outside entities. In other words, not contracts with our employees, but contracts with outside entities.
Like one of the learning services or something like that?
Something like that, yes, or, or, um,
Like the IU?
If we have a.
Bussing?
IU, uh, yeah, bussing, um, a, any, any outside entity that we contract with. Those contracts ought to be available for the public to see even before we vote on them because if we vote them down, the, the public needs to look at them to see just what it, actually it is that we voted down. You're heavy in thought, Christina. I'm waiting.
I am. I am thinking it through to different contracts just to be sure that perhaps when we say bussing, we must mean bussing for the general population of students, not a special service for a special student. So that's where my mind was going.
Absolutely, absolutely. Um, and, and I don't know whether, I, I think we have a contract with a printing service, um, that contract, contracts to that like that. I think that it should be made available to the public to see. And, and, um, getting back to the, the, um, public comment period, I, I think that we, I, I agree with our um, attorney that, um, that whole paragraph should be deleted. Um, it has to do with, with the ten days, putting in a request ten days for the, um, actually it's not for the public comment, but it's for the, the attachments.
Yeah, I think that's obsolete from when they had to photocopy things and provide.
And, and I know it was mentioned before, I believe by Christina, that, that possibly could have been put in there also before the Sunshine Act and that would probably make sense at that period, but, um, I, 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 I would like to, to, um, possibly put all this to rest at the next board meeting by a vote. Um, if that would be all, at all possible, Mr. Schimmel.
Yeah, and if, if we've got it fleshed out that we're all comfortable with what, where we're going, I, I, yeah, I'd, I'd agree with that. Um, now, on, on the policy, uh, oh six on page three of eight, um, where it talks about the agenda in the first, uh, in, in, in this paragraph one agenda. The last sentence reads, uh, "At the same time the agenda is provided to each director, an agenda not containing attachments." We, we have to revise that to, to strike out the word "not" because we're, what we're saying is we're going to provide attachments. So that's gonna need a revision as well. So we'd be striking out that, that archaic paragraph and then striking out "not" from, uh, the, from the policy as well. So it says we are including it.
It would have to say, um, pr- pr- providing approved attachments because not all attachments would be approved.
Yeah, that's, that's good language. Yep.
Can the policy committee get together with the administration and revise oh six and bring that to our next meeting then?
Only in public, Dale.
And, and, pardon?
Me, how about, how about our policy? Our policy chair, do you want to talk with the superintendent about appropriate language then?
Just, just literally drafting the verbiage and then bring it to, yeah, sure.
Yeah, they're just, and then the super, then the, it can be the agenda next month.
Okay.
And if I might add, I, I think it would be a simpler procedure if we don't list this whole litany of items that can be an attachment viewed before the meeting. But if we just put some statement that gets at the heart of restricted attachments, meaning, you know, where there's, I, I'm sure there's good language that can say in a few words rather than say all the things that are allowed.
Yeah.
Anyway.
Yeah, I think.
I challenged the administration and the policy committee to come up with that.
I believe I've been told by some attorneys that it's better not to list specific do's or don'ts because you might miss some, but rather as directed by the board. The, you know, whatever, we can figure out the language, but if you list a bunch and then you miss something, you know, then you have to go back and revise your policy. So you want to make it a little bit more general.
But I am very supportive of including attachments with the agenda as viewed by the board. The public should be able to go on the website and view those same things. And I also would hope that those attachments then will become part of the permanent archive on the website, uh, for referral, you know, at some point in the future.
Dale, you do realize that by law, committee cannot meet unless it's in public.
Then, all I would state is, would the, would the chairperson of the policy committee get together with the administration and provide the board with a revised policy oh six that we can discuss and vote at the next meeting?
Yes.
Now, I would also.
We have to have something in writing to, to start the discussion at our next meeting.
I would like to get back to the, the second public comment period that we no longer have. And I would like to, um, have that put in the policy that we have a second comment period, um, with time permitting, since we are limiting the amount of time for the board meetings, uh, it's just like.
Let me, let me interrupt just for a second, just to see if you have clarified what I said was correct. We are using the original language from the policy that goes back probably even when you were president that it is one comment period. And what you're requesting then is a second comment period.
Uh, yeah, I'm requesting a second comment period, but I would like to know where you see where it says one comment period because I have the, I have it right here.
So I think it says one comment period. I don't have it in front of me. I apologize. I will highlight it for you. It's out, it's out on our website. So if you read it, what does it say about comment periods?
It's, I, I'll read the whole paragraph, uh, the whole two paragraphs. Well, actually, there's three of them. One's real short. "In order to prevent fair and orderly expression of public comment, the board shall provide an opportunity at each meeting of the board for residents and taxpayers to comment on matters of concern, official action or deliberatory action before the board prior to official action by the board. An individual who has provided a written board prior presentation form may address the board for five minutes. An individual who has not provided a written prior presentation form may address the board during the public comment period after stating their name and address for one unpaused period of three minutes. The overall length of the public comment period will normally be forty-five minutes or less."
So right there, the public comment period. The public comment period shall appear before the, on the agenda before the board actions. The public comment period.
If we only have ten minutes of public comment, um, a, at the beginning of the meeting, then the balance of that forty-five minutes should be put in at the end of the meeting.
I think at the end of the day, you're probably gonna see that, that go up a little bit, Ron, the public comment at the beginning. If they know they can't have anything at the end of the meeting, that you're gonna get more people to get involved possibly to speak about what they need to speak about at the beginning of the meeting. And if they, it carries over, if it carries over to the next meeting, it carries over to the next meeting. I mean, nobody.
Why should you have to?
Yeah, but.
But as Dottie said too, it can be emailed where a response is given so that the person has something from the board in writing that they can reference as well. And if they wish to come back, then they also have that with them.
Why should they have to wait to go to another meeting when there is time left at a board meeting that you've already put restrictions, the board has already put restrictions on a time limit? It's ridiculous.
That's your opinion? And that's what the board decides. If that's what the board decides, that's up to the board. What it says is a normal period will be forty-five minutes or less. So they are allotting a lot of time on there for circumstances, perhaps if we get into a heavy budget discussion or if we get into a renovation or a building project. Those are the pieces. But on a normal basis, you're speaking, you have your time, and that's what you need to say about whatever you need to say.
Okay, I'm asking, I'm asking nine board members because I'm asking myself too. How many of you board members want to restrict the time that people can speak when there is time left on the board, um, for the meeting? You're restricting a board.
I don't think, I, I, let me just qualify the statement one more time. We are offering one unpaused three-minute timeframe. If you do that, you are negating what you have written and what the policy committee stated and what the original policy even stated again. One three-minute time period.
Well.
So just think about that. If that's the decision, think about that because now it's not one three-minute time period. Now you have to change more policy. And if you're gonna do that, just let me know what you want to have done.
Well, in the first place, I don't want to limit people on, on when they want to talk. If, if there's two or three people who come to the meeting, there is no reason why those people have to have a time limit of three minutes. If there's two hundred people that want to speak, yes, I can see that. But when you have two or three people, five people that want to speak, there is no reason to limit the time that they want to speak. And the reason to have the meeting, the time at the end of the meeting is things that were discussed by board members during the meeting. People might have reason to comment on it at the end of the meeting while it's fresh in their mind.
Ron, nobody, you are, you are putting us in a negative limelight here and I absolutely do not like that question that you just posed. What are we supposed to say? We don't care about what people? Of course we care about what people say, but we have to have some decorum in this board. And sometimes you need to accept when your opinion is not the majority and just let it go.
All I'm saying is when there is time left, when there is time left in the meeting, there's no reason why we shouldn't be able to do a second public comment period.
Okay, end of discussion.
Hey, board, we, we are going to work on the language of policy oh six as far as that one paragraph and, and then on having agenda attachments that are as, as inclusive as possible. And the superintendent will obviously need some latitude to seek some, uh, maybe legal counsel of, hey, should I be releasing this thing? You know, that may happen on occasion, it may not. Uh, and if she has, uh, any questions on document that she's concerned that she doesn't think should be there, um, you know, would give her that latitude to make a judgment call. And if we need to clarify it with her, we can do that. So she's, uh, she's a smart lady. She knows what she, you know, should and shouldn't do. And, uh, I want to protect her from making a mistake because it appears to me that one of our other districts has made a mistake. So, as far as the meeting comment period and all that, I mean, board, I'll continue with, I, I read this whole, this whole section of agenda item three describing what the public comment period was now that it was a consolidated comment period. I thought I explained it well enough. I'll go back and look at the video and see if I can say something different. I thought I explained it well enough. I'll go back and look at the video and see if I can say something different. But we'll continue with that consolidated comment period until the board decides to do something different. And I will tell you, but with, we 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 know now that we're we're moving public comments from from the videos. There's no chance now for us to go back and hear what the public had to say. And and if any of you have minds like a trap and you think you'll remember everything that's said by the the public, you won't. We'll forget this. That's one of the reasons I like email, because they can tell me what they think about something. And I can, I can read it over and over and and even, you know, try to think up a response or how to explain something. So that's why I appreciate email. But we go to, we, next month, we're live. You know, we're going to be sitting, listening to public comment in person. You know, that probably helps the memory factor, I think. I I think when somebody's speaking to us directly, it's easier to remember. But but still, you know, if they want to get their point across after the meeting, you know, the the horses are already out of the barn. It's it's in a way, it's too late. And essentially, they're just going to be, I I hate to say it this way, but are they just going to be?
I want, I would like to point something out too.
Yes.
Every time that we put one another on the defense, that is not transparency for the public. If you want transparency for the public, the win-win is to have these types of discussions and to come back from these types of discussions. If there is something that people want to put us on pins and needles for, that is not a win-win. That's not transparency. I have asked that any of these invoices, as an example of this, be brought up prior to the board meeting so that the public actually gets to hear the actual backstory on why we needed something or what we were doing or elsewise. Otherwise, it's one transparency, but not a full transparency. So we really need to do exactly what Dottie is saying, bring the decorum into this. But if we really, really think about the transparency, then you don't put people on the spot. You actually ask what you need to ask and you then research so that it is based in fact, not a motion. That's my point.
Well, taken. All right, board. I think we've talked this through a lot. We're going to make some headway at the next meeting. And we probably have it, we'll have additional discussion that down the road, I'm sure. So unless there was any other items of critical discussion, I think we're ready to wrap this up. And I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Or we can talk some more. What do you want to do? Barry had a motion to adjourn. I think I heard Dottie next with the second. All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed.
Opposed. We need to have public comment.
All right. All right, folks, that the meeting is now adjourned. Thank you.